League of Women Voters Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids area welcomes viewers, candidates, and community members to this Meet the Candidates forum. The forum is for those running in the 2024 election for Coon Rapids City Council Ward Four. I'm Lynda Rogers, forum moderator and a member of League of Women Voters Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids area, sponsor of this forum. I live in Anoka and cannot vote for either of these candidates. This forum is about informing voters. It's an opportunity to hear from candidates on important issues and compare their ideas. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose political parties, does not support or oppose candidates for office. The League's goal is simply that each of you will vote. Thank you to Coon Rapids CTN for recording the forum and making it available for multiple showings and online. Editing is only authorized for official media reporting. Edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. Voter questions have been submitted online in advance and no additional questions will be taken from the audience during the event. Candidates for Coon Rapids City Council Ward Four are Christopher Geisler and Blake Miskwic. All candidates for this race were invited to participate in the forum and we're happy that all candidates agreed to participate. Welcome, Christopher Geisler and Blake Miskwic. We'll begin with two general questions that were provided to the candidates in advance, followed by questions from the public submitted online. We'll end with closing statements from each candidate. Candidates will rotate answering questions first, and I've asked them to please correct me if I make an error in guiding their rotation. They will have up to 90 seconds to answer each of the first two questions. We'll begin with Christopher Geisler. What is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. Events like this provide a critical venue for the public to get to know their candidates. And I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates here at Coon Rapids for participating in this and other forums. My name is Christopher Geisler and I'm running for Coon Rapids City Council Ward Four. I'm running for this seat because I believe that being involved and engaged in your community is the best way to give back to it and to ensure that it is the best that it can be. That's exactly why in 2017 I joined the Transportation Advisory Board as a citizen representative and also why in 2019 I joined the Planning Commission here in Coon Rapids. These two roles have given me a significant amount of experience working with staff, ordinances, law, and the general governments of a public entity like this city. In addition to that, I also work as an IT technologist and IT auditor at a global manufacturing company as my day job. In both of these roles, I've learned how to find consensus between conflicting parties, learned how to achieve long-term goals with short-term moves, and how to get deep into the details while keeping the ultimate goal in mind. It's with these skills that I'm equipped to handle the business of this city, serve the needs of the citizens, and ensure that we all have the best place to live and work. Thank you.
Blake Miskwic, what is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you serve effectively?
Thank you. Thanks for asking that question. And much like my opponent, I would like to start just by thanking everyone for having this opportunity to be here today and thanking the League of Women Voters for what they do and being able to put this message out into the community. And so my motivation in running for this office is, it's similar to my opponent and I believe that in order to have a greater sense of community, I believe public service is one of those ways that you can achieve that. And that's one of the main reasons why I chose to run for this position. And it's also been a big theme of mine throughout my adult life and even as a young adult, joining the military at a young age, at the age of 17. And so service has been a part of my life from a young age. And so I'll use that experience and knowledge to help me serve effectively as the next Coon Rapids Ward Four City Council member.
Blake Miskwic, what are your goals for Coon Rapids' future?
My goals for the future of Coon Rapids, it's very simple. I've broken it down into three main categories. Number one being public safety. I support our law enforcement 100% and all of our emergency service personnel. And I believe that we need to give them the tools necessary to get the job done. And number two, I believe in spending wisely and fiscal responsibility. And during tough times that we're facing right now, we just need to remember to use the funds that we have available the best way possible. And number three, I want to maintain or even improve the city streets and parks. And being a lifelong Minnesota resident, I think we can all agree that you're driving down the road sometimes and the street might not be as nice as it could be. And so we got those potholes to worry about here in Minnesota, but that's definitely one of the things that I want to improve or at least maintain moving forward.
Christopher Geisler, what are your goals for Coon Rapids' future?
Thank you. I think my largest goal would be prepare the city for its long-term future. One consistent issue you see with local budgets is the tendency to look at things in one or maybe a two-year timeline. This can leave a city unprepared for surprises like a pandemic or unable to tackle large one-time needs. We have done well here in Coon Rapids to plan for some larger needs, like the new fire station as a great example, but we really need to think about the services our city provides to its residents. Our aging population has led to a significant increase in support calls through our fire department, and over the last 10 years, it's likely those calls will continue to increase as they have. We need to ensure we're ready to deal with the coming changes of the next decade as well as what we have done for the last decade. We also need to be ready for a continued natural growth of the city. By 2050, the predictive models and city staff estimate that our population will go to around 71,000 and add roughly 60 new households per year over the next 25 years. While this growth may come in fits and starts and not all at once, an additional 7,000 to 9,000 residents will have an impact to the city's services. We need to plan accordingly. We want to ensure that we're ready for what's coming and we want to make the path to that future as smooth and as predictable as possible for citizens and businesses. Finally, I want to ensure that the city is easy to do business with. There are many places where undue friction has been created or where the city's code is not kept up with changes in how the world works. I want to ensure that the city attracts residents and businesses to be a great place to live, work, and shop. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We'll move now to questions submitted online by the public. These responses are limited to one minute. And we'll begin with Christopher Geisler. What is your opinion of the current budget proposal? Would you make any changes? If so, what would you change?
Thank you. The current budget proposal, in my opinion, is actually very well crafted with city staff. They've taken into account the fact that we've lost a lot of pandemic funding and one-time funding over the years. LGA funding has been shifting around quite a bit. And in my opinion, we have a pretty hard pace to run with considering that a lot of our neighbors are looking at double-digit percentage tax increases, yet in the city here, we've managed to keep it well below 10%. I think that's a good practice. I want to see us continue to do that. But I also want to see us to set a timeline out for five, 10 years as not necessarily committing to it, but setting it long-term to get an idea of what we can count on long-term. The one thing I do think that's missing from the budget, however, is that the fire department has been asking for a training member to utilize the new resources of the investment of Fire Station Three. I think that's a missed opportunity and while I do understand the desire to keep that ask low, I think that's something that could have been added. Thank you.
Blake Miskwic, what is your opinion of the current budget proposal? Would you make any changes? If so, what would you change?
Thank you. And much like my opponent, I do believe that we're on the right track. And you actually hit the nail on the head there, speaking about the increases for other cities. Well, Coon Rapids has virtually remained, not unchanged, but at a smaller pace. And I believe that we're doing a great job in that regard. And just over the past few years, we've been able to, what I like to say, spend wisely. And I believe that we are doing that. As far as the future projects go, I believe that we will be able to tackle those issues as they develop. And so those are some of the things I do believe that we will be able to tackle those challenges as they present themselves.
Blake Miskwic, what do you know about large budgets and finances that will help you be a city council member?
Thank you. What do I know about large budgets? And, you know, to be perfectly honest, I am a newer candidate and this is my first time in the political swimming pool, so to speak. And actually, as a new candidate, I am not very well-versed on that issue, but I will definitely look into it and we'll have to research that more.
Christopher Geisler, what do you know about large budgets and finances that will help you be a city council member?
Part of my day job is auditing the financials and financial controls of a large multi-billion-dollar corporation. That's what I do every day. I work with my accountants all the time. And while that budget is significantly larger than the city, it has taught me a lot about how to read a balance sheet, how to read a financial statement, and how to budget accordingly, especially with fixed budgets. And that's where my time at TAB has taught me quite a bit of learning how fiscal sources coming in through either laws or things passed by Congress as well as stable funding sources. That has taught me how to really manage through and understand when we need more, we have to ask for more. And when we ask for more, we put that on our citizens. And so between being able to audit, to find gaps, to find opportunities to improve in my professional day job, as well as understanding how to work with staff, how to work with a fixed pie of resources and get the most out of it and the best bang for our buck, that's what I've been doing since 2017.
Again, Christopher Geisler, what are your ideas to help make housing more affordable for people who want to live in Coon Rapids?
Thank you. The first and best solution for making housing affordable is simply building more of it. When you increase the supply, it meets the demand, which allows for less upward pressure on pricing. And that's been a significant challenge here in the city as what, as we've seen developments go in that used to be in the early 2000s, maybe 150, $200,000 single-family homes are now going for $350,000. That's really, really challenging. And so my approach, like what I've been doing on the Planning Commission, has been to increase the housing supply of all types, some of it high-density to allow more apartments and renters to enter in and start their homeownership journey, as well as meeting 65-plus and town homes and single-family developments. Those are all things that we can look forward to increasing the affordability by increasing the supply within the city.
Blake Miskwic, what are your ideas to help make housing more affordable for people who want to live in Coon Rapids?
Thank you. And I believe that in order to make housing more affordable in Coon Rapids, what I would say is that we need to give some more incentives to those, and especially those that may be first-time homebuyers. I know that the federal government has a program and I believe, don't quote me on, I believe that the state of Minnesota has a program as well. And it would be nice for Coon Rapids to have something similar to that. And I think that would be very helpful in building up that situation.
Again, Blake Miskwic, what do you think of the city's current sustainability offerings and practices? Are there changes you would like to see?
Thank you. And the city's current sustainability practices, like any city, what you strive to do is you want to move forward and you want to be able to have something greater than what you had in the past. And so I believe that this is a very important topic. And when you look at the money that's being spent this way, what you're really looking at is the future of Coon Rapids. You don't want to be replacing infrastructure every few years because we're not sustaining or we're not maintaining those items. And so it really comes down to making wise choices in those areas and making sure that that stuff is available for our future residents.
Christopher Geisler, what do you think of the city's current sustainability offerings and practices? Are there changes you would like to see?
Well, first of all, I'm excited that we have a sustainability staff member on and the Sustainability Commission has been working with them and making great strides to improve what's going on in the city. The fact that we've achieved Step Five of the Green Step Cities, the fact that we are SolarSmart certified, the fact that we've updated some of our local ordinances to accommodate new and changing things on either rooftop solar or EV charging, or the fact that we're even getting recommendations for developers to consider, not require, just consider these opportunities. Those are things that I think are great within the city that are forwarding our ability to be more sustainable as a community as a whole. One factor of sustainability, though, that I think we should focus on is resiliency. And we can see that down south right now after the impacts of the weather down there. Climate resiliency is a key thing that Minnesota needs to prepare for, not necessarily a hurricane, but severe freeze and warming cycles can damage our infrastructure significantly, both water and road. And I think that's an area where we could go deeper.
Again, Christopher Geisler, how do you plan to engage with and represent all members in our increasingly diverse community?
Thank you. First of all, it's been simple as door knocking and connecting and having conversations with them and being available. I pride myself on being available through multiple methods for communities, but also getting out in the community. I think events like Summer in the City are a phenomenal way for every area or every city, every area within the city to meet with their council members, meet with city staff, and doing events like that. I think also being available at other community events like our Fourth of July celebration, like Movies in the Park, and other activities really help just let people know that you're there and you're available to them. But those face-to-face conversations are really the best way to be there and be available. And that's what I would seek to do.
Blake Miskwic, how do you plan to engage with and represent all members in our increasingly diverse community?
Thank you. And yes, this is something that I look forward to doing. And I believe that my opponent actually hit the nail right on the head again. And I agree completely with the different events that we have going on in Coon Rapids. That is a great representation of what the community is all about. And I attended a few of those events over the summer and it really was a great time and a good get-together. And you do get to meet key people from the city, council members, as well as different people from anything, from the fire department to the police department. And so I believe it's the continuation of those events and adding, you know, possibly some different types of events that we might not be used to. And I believe that definitely is the way to engaging with the community.
And here's a twist on that previous question. Blake Miskwic, regardless of who wins this election, the city council will be comprised entirely of men. How will you ensure women's voices are heard on the council?
Thank you. That's a great question. And we, it's unfortunate, actually, that we do not have any women and, you know, the famous quote of woman's intuition. And we could use that on the city council for sure. And I guess we could hold, we could hold some different events and actually something geared more towards the feminine persuasion. And definitely look forward to representing both male and female and anything in between. And so, yes, I believe that it is unfortunate that we do not have any females in the upcoming elections, but I do believe that we can still have that touch and reach that community.
Christopher Geisler, regardless of who wins this election, the city council will be comprised entirely of men. How will you ensure women's voices are heard on the council?
Thank you. It is unfortunate that both of our women city council members are retiring or moving on to other activities and we will have an all-male council regardless. I do think that I would like to see more candidates come forward and I would love to engage our citizens who are interested in pulling them forward. And that's one way to get better voices heard. But I also don't see my answer as being any different of connecting with the community because the community is the community. It doesn't matter who you are, doesn't matter your expressed gender, doesn't matter your expressed orientation, faith, whatever. You're a member of our community. And so I view it as hearing from my citizens, hearing from my constituents. I don't, who you are, what you are, who you believe in, how you vote, does not matter to me because if I win, you would be my constituent and I would seek to represent you. So my first thing would be to have a conversation, no matter what.
Christopher Geisler, would you support workers, both public and private, in fair negotiations and in the process of unionizing their workplaces?
Unionizing is one of the great rights that this country has given our workers and staff, whether it be municipal staff, whether it be businesses within the city itself. I believe that if a workforce has decided that they want to unionize and that is the best use of their collective bargaining power, then I believe that they should be supported and allowed to do so. And that is a conversation between the staff and, the staff of that business and the ownership. With regards to the city staff, if they decided to organize, that would be also something that I would be open to considering. I believe that when it comes to negotiating a contract and working with two different parties, something that I do in my day job, I put it akin to, both of us have three cards and together we need to make a poker hand that wins. And that's how negotiations should work in a productive and happy environment, is everybody comes together to find the best solution for all parties involved. And so, yes, I would support.
Blake Miskwic, would you support workers, both public and private, in fair negotiations and in the process of unionizing their workplaces?
Thank you. And I, first thing I have to say is yes. And I'm a former union member myself and being a part of the 120 as a local there in Blaine. And I was a part of the union for about seven years as a semi-class A semi-driver. And yes, I believe that it's important to support that and I believe in the worker's right to unionize.
Again, Blake Miskwic, will you accept the outcome of the election results, win or lose?
Yes, thank you. And this is an important topic. I know more and more people have been having less faith in the results. And I believe that that's unfortunate, but win or lose, I will accept the outcome of this race. And I believe it's important to maintain that sense of, we'll call it community for lack of a better word, but yes, I believe that in order to move forward and to have what's best for the city of Coon Rapids, yes, I will accept the outcome regardless of what that may be.
Christopher Geisler, will you accept the outcome of the election results, win or lose?
Absolutely. I believe that Anoka County and Minnesota as a whole has a great elections process. Our staff here have done very well to bring, educate our election judges. The League itself has provided phenomenal resources for folks to understand how the elections process works here, not only in the city, but in the county and the state as well. The fact that we have paper ballots with machine tabulation means we get faster results with an actual record of what happened. And that is the best way to get this done. So I would absolutely accept the results and I believe that we have the processes in place to ensure that everyone who votes will have their vote counted.
Switching gears, Christopher Geisler, research on toxicity of PFAs has been in the news. What are your ideas to keep Coon Rapids safe from the threat of PFAs?
Forever chemicals are one of those topics that is extremely challenging. And that's where I actually, I'll hearken back to our Sustainability Commission. And funding them and resourcing them in ways to divest of the city's, putting PFAs either in the community, in our resources, in our infrastructure, wherever possible, is the best way to solve that problem. I also think some awareness could be sent out. There are a lot of alternatives now that are just as good to those forever chemicals. And in the long term, I do think that coming up with public service, public advisory, and programs to help people realize what are the risks and what are the viable alternatives that are not cost prohibitive would be the best use of the city's resources.
Blake Miskwic, research on toxicity of PFAs has been in the news. What are your ideas to keep Coon Rapids safe from the threat of PFAs?
Thank you. And yes, the threat of PFAs, it has been in the news lately. And I think, I think knowledge is half the battle. So I think what would be the best thing is to just to gather some awareness on this topic and actually just try to make sure that the city, and not just Coon Rapids, but sure, make sure that the population is aware of this. And I believe that that knowledge or knowing is half the battle. And so if we can spread the awareness and just let people know that this is out there and that it's the real deal and that just by that alone, I believe that we can definitely keep the city of Coon Rapids safe.
We have time for just one more question. Blake Miskwic, how can you best leverage your skills to affect positive change in local politics?
Thank you. And how can I leverage my skills? Well, I'm going to lean a lot on my military service. I was in the Army for 12 years. I was deployed three times overseas. And during those deployments, I learned how to think and I learned how to act on my feet. And those things have helped me quite a bit throughout the years and are definitely going to help me here in service to the city of Coon Rapids. And the one thing that I would like to say is that service has been a part of my life since I was young and that this really, this is, it's really a great honor for me and a great opportunity for me if I do end up with this position in November. And so I would just like to say that I will use that knowledge accordingly. And hopefully there's no lives on the line here in the city council. But yes, having to work quickly and work under pressure is something that I'm very familiar with.
Christopher Geisler, how can you best leverage your skills to affect positive change in local politics?
As I've mentioned earlier, a lot of my skills already are serving the community. At the Transportation Advisory Board, I sit with a board of 36 people from all around the metro of all different political persuasions, coming from county, city, citizen, modal. And I'm seen as somebody to ask questions to and to get into the policy wonky details of how things are working. I've served on the Executive Commission there. I've helped write the transportation policy plan for 2050 that's coming forward. And I've gotten into the nitty-gritty details and those are the skills and experiences that I have to make sure that the city operates as effectively as possible, of getting into those wonky, deep details and making sure that they work for our citizens and for our businesses. I also have the experience of working with the financial dollars to the level of what the city handles. That's something that I do every day and that I've worked with over many, many, of my 17 years working at a manufacturing company. I understand how to make those things work and how to connect to get to the goals we want.
It's time for our candidates to take a breath because we'll be ending our forum now with closing statements. Christopher Geisler will begin.
Thank you, Lynda. And thank you again to the League for hosting this and other candidate forums. I also want to thank the other candidates that participated, not only here for Blake, as well as the other forums for the city. I encourage everyone to watch these forums for all I encourage everyone to watch these forums for all races that you can vote for. And I would recommend also that everyone consider other resources like vote411.org, the profiles in the newspaper, Metro Moore's Chamber of Commerce's website, and NPR Voter Resources. These are all great places to learn more about candidates on your ballot before you cast your vote. You can also find out more about me and my campaign on these resources, as well as on my website, votageisler.com. I'm Christopher Geisler. I'm running for Coon Rapids City Council Ward Four, and I ask for your vote. I will bring to a close to a decade of experience serving Coon Rapids in volunteer roles at TAB and Planning Commission to the city council. I will use my professional skills and extensive experience to ensure our city will operate smoothly and efficiently for the next four years. From zoning to planning to budget and IT security, you can count on me to bring my skills to bear for you and for the city. You can vote early right now or on Election Day, November 5. Thank you.
And Blake Missquick, your closing statement.
Thank you. And I would just want to mimic what my opponent was saying. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this forum and having this opportunity to be here today. And in my closing remarks here, what I just, I would like to hit the three topics that I really wanted to hit home. And basically, it was public safety is one of the things that I'm very passionate about. And definitely 100% behind our law enforcement and our emergency services personnel. And secondly, the fiscal responsibility and just choosing to spend wisely as we move forward. And in Coon Rapids, we've done a very good job, actually. And so it's one of the things that I look forward to contributing to. And thirdly, definitely would like to maintain or even improve our city streets and our parks. And so I look forward to being a part of the city council. And I would just like to finish with my website is blakeforcrwardfour.com. And thank you, and don't forget to vote.
League of Women Voters thanks the candidates for speaking to voters about issues and for running for Coon Rapids City Council, Ward Four. Thanks, audience members, viewers, and those who submitted questions. Find links to all forums at lvwabcmn.org. General election is Tuesday, November 5, and early voting is underway. You can vote early at Coon Rapids City Hall or the Inoka County Elections Office. Please see the Coon Rapids website for more information. You can register to vote, update your registration, find information on voting options, and find your polling place online, all at mnvotes.org or the Minnesota Secretary of State website. You can also register or update your registration at your polling place on Election Day. If you're interested in League of Women Voters, visit our website at lvwabcmn.org. Women and men aged 16 and older are welcome to join. Your vote is your voice. Make your voice heard by voting on or before November 5.